There will be the night all who live and join us in standing for the recitation of war's prayer, followed by the moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever, amen.
Shall we say that Councilman McLaughlin has called the word? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just either please. Roll call please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts here. Mr. Gates here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin here.
I'm now entertaining, well, I may say, Mr. Geis is actually here. Hopefully, he'll be joining us in a little while. He had some maintenance issues to take care of at City Hall, and that were very expedient and matters, so hopefully, he'll be joining us in just a little while. I'm now entertaining a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from September the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and second by Mr. Martin, to dispense with the reading of the Journal from September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Now, coming to the time for public comment, if anyone has a comment they would like to make at this time, or if they would like to reserve time for a piece of legislation to come on the agenda later on, you can come now and state your name and address, and the reserve time, or make comment now. I'm seeing none, or hearing no public comment. We'll move forward to reports from standing and special committees. And with Councilman McLaughlin, the first report being Community and Economic Development Committee. And my apologies, we also have, of course, a committee at the whole meeting, and he presided over that, so if it would please counsel, put both of those reports together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start out with the Community and Whole Meeting we had. So, we met on the twenty-ninth of September at three-thirty. As a committee, the whole, and the subject of our discussion was the ambulance contract. And so, that, yeah, that, from that meeting, we are considering legislation this evening in ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-two. So, that's all I have for that. Meeting, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'll move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. We met today at three-thirty. And I'd just have the brief, couple of brief items to mention. So, the historical preparation was there with us today, and they, I passed out these little cards to all the council members. So, the building, Dr. Clinic, is gonna be in Shelby here. The seminar is gonna take place October tenth at seven P.M. That's a Monday. And then, the visits are gonna be the next morning, on the eleventh of October, from nine to one. And so, so far, we have three visits. They're gonna look at the, the old fire station, then our private property owner on Blue Rambo Ward, and then also the mausoleum. So, they hope they have several more locations that get on the list for that. But, um, they, for the seminar on Monday night at seven P.M., they need at least ten people in order to give the presentation. So, if you want to sign up, make sure you register to attend. And then, Representative from the library was at our meeting today, and so, a couple of events I wanna make you aware of coming up this month, and into next month. A Bigfoot investigator by the name of Doug Waller, he's going to be here October tenth at six P.M. to discuss that topic. And then, there's gonna be a lunch for veterans at the library, at the garden room, on the fifth of November, from eleven to one. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman McLaughlin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. McLaughlin in regard to his twofold report? All right, now, moving forward to Public Works and General Operations Committee. Councilman Robb.
Public Works and General Operations Committee met on the twenty-seventh. I ask Mr. Geis, who is in attendance, the status on repairs on the City Hall building, where the awning, the damaged awning, it is no longer there, actually. And he said that he's still waiting on a contractor to do inspections on, on the front awning. If there's gonna need to be some work done to that, probably benefits of getting it all done at the same time. Mr. Dean was also present at the meeting, and he raised a couple of interesting points, and proposed some changes to the language of section fourteen ninety point one-four. And I think we'll see some legislation in that direction within the coming months. He also advised that there's some ongoing external property maintenance issues, and in four cases, had been sent to the law director for action. So, he's right on top of that. A couple of park projects are underway, one of those being the Blackport Commons, and also, there's some movement towards getting some repairs done to the pickleball court, or converting the tennis court to that. Also, as far as proposed changes in ordinances, the city engineer has gone through the ordinances, and there are a number of those that need to be updated, specifically, those that don't match state requirements as far as specification for building and so forth. And we'll probably see those in the near future. And last but not least, Mr. Geis and is still working on the process for the food truck permitting, so, and that's all there, there was there, so, that's all my report.
All right. Councilman Robb, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robb in regard to his report? Mr. Martin.
The, the reference that we're looking at changed, could I just have that one more time? From, uh, from Mr. Dean, which, what was the reference number?
About the, the section number?
Yes.
Fourteen ninety point one-four.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clear up some language there.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had it correctly.
Well, if I may, when we brought Mr. Dean on as a code enforcement officer, I think Councilman Martin had mentioned in particular that, you know, while he is in the field and concentrating on these enforcement issues, if there, if there are some things we could tweak to make them clearer, less ambiguity, and more easily enforceable, that we roll with that. So, that's exactly what he's doing. We've been having conversations between Mr. Geis and Mr. Dean and myself, so, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's gonna be another positive spinoff of having someone concentrating in this effort of exterior maintenance. Mr. Martin.
And I am very pleased to, to hear such a report, so.
Very good, too. Thank you. All right, any further comments or questions? Let's move forward then to the parking committee. Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we met on the twenty-seventh also, right after the Public Works meeting, Bob Dean also attended our meeting, has his role of code enforcement agent. And we didn't, Chief Combs and I met the week before, so, you know, we had conversation on some of the things that Chief Combs and I talked about, you know, that some of our, some of our parking ordinances have not changed with the times. The revised code has changed, and we've just kinda lagged behind. There's some things in there from the nineteen thirties that are probably not needed anymore. So, you know, no, nothing right now as far as legislation coming out, but Mr. Dean also, you know, like you did with some of the, the old work stuff, he is, he's taking some stuff down as far as parking goes. He's doing a really good job with a lot of the grass parking and that. So, as, as he sees them, you know, he gets them, he gets a hold of the people, and he says it's free. So far, it's been calm, and people agreed and kind of, you know, complied, so, and when they don't, you know, they'll, they'll take it where it needs to. So, but other than that, Chief Combs couldn't attend that meeting, but we had a, had a good, I don't wanna call it the first meeting, but a good first meeting, where we had some real information. So, that's all I have.
Councilman Roberts, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report?
All right, hearing none, we'll move forward to a reports of city officials. Last couple of weeks, I've been occupied with the typical mayoral duties and obligations. On September twenty-fourth, I had the privilege of attending the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board Annual Meeting in Mansfield, and was very encouraged to hear of the progress of, of that great organization. On September the twenty-seventh, I presided over the Shelby State Planning Commission meeting. And September the twenty-ninth, of course, I attended with you all, the Committee at the Whole Meeting that Councilman McLaughlin referred to. I do have a proclamation, to deliver a proclamation of stormwater awareness week. This is early, but let me try to get ahead of this, actually, to be held October twenty-second, I'm sorry, the sixteenth to the twenty-second, as you will see in the proclamation. Proclamation reads, whereas urban stormwater runoff impacts water quality in the Blackport watershed in the city of Shelby, Richland County, Ohio, and whereas changes to the agricultural landscape, population growth, residential and commercial development will only increase stormwater quantity and quality concerns throughout Ohio, and whereas these environmental impacts cannot be entirely avoided or eliminated, but can be properly managed, and whereas it is currently recognized that control of stormwater quantity and quality is most effectively implemented, and people and organizations understand the related causes and consequences of polluted stormwater runoff and flooding, and the actions they can take to control them, and whereas the need arises not only from the regulatory requirements of EPA general construction and municipal stormwater rules, but also from the recognition that citizens and local decision-makers will benefit from a greater awareness of how the cumulative impacts of decisions at home, at work, and through local policies impact our water quality, stream corridors, and flooding, and whereas a development and implementation of effective outcome-based stormwater education and outreach programs will meet the related federal stormwater pollution control requirements, and those of the communities they serve, so that Ohio continues to be a great place to live, work, and play, now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen Elshay, mayor of the city of Shelby, Ohio, encourage the citizens of Shelby to join the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District and communities across Ohio in recognizing October sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, through October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, as Stormwater Awareness Week. In witness whereof, I hereby intend to set my hand and cause the city, cause rather, the seal of the city of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this third day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two. And so, that is the proclamation we will deliver to the folks of Richland Soil and Water Conservation Districts. So, that is my report and proclamation. Are there any comments or questions for me? If not, we'll turn the page and go to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Pretty routine business in my department as well, doing some random reports and working with the auditors to get both the city and health department audits finished up. Hopefully, I'll have something for you soon. I don't have, other than the engagement letter said at the end of November, I don't have any expedited date as of right now. Our new tax clerk is, is working out well, so that's, that is proceeding nicely. Other than that, nothing going too exciting in my office. So, that is my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I understand that there is a possibility sometime in the near future of a request for a transfer of a liquor permit. I would ask the finance director's clerk of council that if he should receive any such transfers, if he would let the council know immediately, you know, you know, it could come tomorrow, and we wouldn't know about it until the next council meeting. I would prefer to hear about them just as soon as they arrive at the clerk's laws.
Sure. Mr. Crum, is it noted? Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, now, moving forward to Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mayor. I will confirm that Mr. Dean is, in fact, working the city over. We have charged numerous folks. I know he's getting a lot more resolved than, than we need to file, so that's a good sign from my book. Routine business and contracts, so, not a new report.
And may I make the brief comment, and I think we did before, Mr. Dean has the right approach of this. He is trying to resolve these issues rather than the next step and present to Mr. Geis. So, that is his, number one. He, he's more than willing, a phone call comes in to meet with, with anyone face-to-face on the property and talk about it, and so, I think that's a great approach. So, thank you for bringing that up. But there still are those cases that will be brought to, to the vault right there. Thank you, sir.
All right, any comments, questions? Mr. Geis. All right, Mr. Geis, glad you made it back in, but, oh, I should say, private coordinator, I better, better make sure that's right.
A lot going on downtown. Obviously, Washington District got its first COVID basketball, finally, thank you, and we'll get the second one tomorrow, we'll open that back up Wednesday morning. Downtown streetscape, we ran into a potential issue, I think it's resolved, but there's a concrete shortage in the area. Their supplier, we called up and asked for some concrete, and they said, I can't get change it right now. So, we were trying to decide, you know, we have a big intersection that's full of concrete, and if there's a possibility we can get concrete, we weren't gonna tear that up. That was resolved, we got to talk with the supplier, they're very confident now that after some more research, that we're gonna be okay, but that was a big scare, and, you know, there's still, we'll keep an eye on it, and there is a plan if something were to come up, but nothing's good at that point, so. But they are moving on, along very well now, and you're gonna start seeing a lot more bricks going down, and, and to get this thing finished, so. Blackport Commons will start on Wednesday, so they're gonna come in and start the foundations for the building back there, and get a lot of underground work done in that, so, anticipate, I'm sure they'll let off some during winter, and then pick it back up in the spring. And I did attend the housing study that Shelby helped pay for with various other county officials, and I think Mrs. Rubin is very involved with that, and she did a very nice job of just helping present that, but a lot of neat information, I'll, I'll try to see if I can get that PowerPoint or show them, but there was a lot of, some we knew, some was interesting, but there will be another meeting coming up later, so, maybe if we can get that, we can pass it on, you guys can come to attend, so. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Geis, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Mr. Martin.
I do have a question about the, the construction and the road closures, so I know it's gonna be roughly thirty days, maybe not as much, of course, if we don't kick concrete, it'll be a little longer. Is there any potentiality of making, like, Washington a two-way street in the meantime? I know, like, Mohican's multidirectional, but obviously, that's closed off, and there's really not a good way to get, I've seen a lot of vehicles today coming down Main Street because it's closed, they're doing like a U-turn there, and that can't be beneficial to, you know, so once Washington streets open up, I think it would probably be best if there is a way in and out of Main Street that's not just six to one.
Mr. Geis.
We've looked at that before, and I don't know if I can take traffic commission, but there would be a lot of spaces on the parking spaces that would have to be, I guess, in our painting, yeah, so maybe, but, before the hit, I did. A lot of, a lot of the issues last time, so, I think, if they do get down there, once Washington's open, that will help out them get out of there. If we were to stop the big trucks coming down, I think we only had one today, that's our biggest, try to stop them from, you know, coming down, because they're gonna get stuck, so, but.
So, yeah, I think, opening Washington Street, if anybody comes heading east on Main, they have, they do have to skate around. I don't know, I don't know if he would necessarily want them coming this, I don't know. Look, think about it, I don't know if you want them coming up Washington Street onto Main, off of Whitney, on Washington, on, Mr. Robb.
I think that would be a move I, I wouldn't consider. I had a situation today, myself personally, on Water Street. I turned into Water Street and almost hit a vehicle head-on that was going the wrong direction, thinking that it was okay to shortcut because of the construction, and people are so used to those being one-way streets that you're just not gonna anticipate a vehicle coming towards you. That, that was actually before the meeting this afternoon. I informed a gentleman that, that it was a one-way street. He said, I, I'm aware of that, I just wanna get back on to Main Street, and, that's right. Not a good idea.
All right. Is, is this gonna be, we understand it's gonna be a challenge over the next three weeks or so, but we'll give some thought, but, so, all right, thanks for breaking that. One question to that, I think you addressed it, Mr. Geis, is the arch, the timing of the arch, do you see that it's gonna be maybe, gonna be a spring project now?
They had, going back and forth between the designer and the contractor on the foundation and so forth, they finally got that straightened around. I'm not quite sure where they're at with the actual arch, so I, I don't have a timeline, so.
Maybe by next meeting, we'll probably know, perhaps, so. Very good. All right. New business, new business that we brought before City Council this evening. Move forward to unfinished business, the former ice plant property, I'm nothing new to report this evening. Any other unfinished business? All right, let's move forward to legislation.
Orders number twenty, you got twenty-two, mending section six hundred eighteen point one-two, hunting prohibited, of chapter six hundred eighteen, animals of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Point of order.
This is.
Mayor, it's amended ordinance for the record.
Yes, so it's not in that, the heading is not correct, correct? Oh, so, on, on, okay, so, all right, that is amended ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-two, on the agenda. Okay. Again.
Number thirteen.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and second by Mr. Martin, for the third reading of amended ordinance number twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Amended ordinance number twenty, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, passes as third reading.
Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates, and second by Mr. Robertson, for the passage of amended ordinance number twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Amended ordinance number twenty, two thousand twenty-two, passes.
Ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, amended ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-two, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Gates, and a second by Mr. Martin, that they were heard in first, that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes.
Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates, and a second by Mr. McLaughlin, for the passage of the ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, if the finance director would briefly explain this for the record.
Mr. Crum.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for keep hitting you guys with amendments to appropriations. I, a lot of weird things this year, but I'll try to make these few and far between. In this case, though, the, the first two line items, the one-on-one F I R, four eighteen, and the two-hundred S T R fourteen for hospitalization, I ended up a little low on those, and that's just, you know, if you get staffing changes and somebody went from single to family, it increases fast. So, I'm, I'm just gonna be a little short in those line items, so I'd like to increase those. The seven oh five S T T five-eleven tree planning, the Shea Tree Commission is applying for a grant that is, I think, a matching grant where we pay five thousand, they would pay five thousand. But in order to do that, we have to appropriate those funds for legislation later on tonight. And then, the last one, claim payments, that's in the hospitalization fund, and unfortunately, we've just had some illnesses and such this year that have racked up some expenditures. The fund is still in an okay shape, there's, revenue is offsetting this, it's just our expenditures are a little higher than last year, so I'd like to increase that line item coverage for the rest of the year.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I, I appreciate the finance director's apology, you know, within reason, he can propose as many supplemental appropriations as need be, as long as he doesn't, as long as we don't have to have a special meeting between Christmas and New Year's. So, I, I would rather deal with him now than during the holiday season. If, if we have to have a meeting then, then he can truly apologize to all of us.
Some raw, raw ground.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Order is number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, passes.
Order is number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, amended chapter two hundred forty, fire department of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Do you think the rules requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. McLaughlin, that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, for the record, I'd like to state why this needs to be an emergency. The current private supplier of medical transport in the city has notified us that it is pulling out, I believe it's on December thirteenth.
October.
I'm sorry, October thirteenth, yes. And we are in a position of having to scramble, for lack of a better verb, to, to deal with that unexpected, and I will go so far as to say irresponsible action on the part of the private provider.
Thank you for that explanation. Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Do you approve passing of your ordinance? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I'd ask the fire chief to come to the podium and, and share his thoughts about this piece of legislation.
Mr. Crum. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, uh, with the passage of this ordinance, if it happens, it's probably one of the biggest undertakings we'll take, the Shelby Fire, uh, since the building. Uh, in a nutshell, we're looking at taking this over, you know, us with, uh, doing all nine-one-one versus transports, uh, the cost to keep the private ambulance with exorbitant, uh, we can add staff for that. With adding staff, there's a few things that need to be changed. Two forty point oh one, establishment of membership, ritual appointments and age limitations. Right now, we're capped at twelve, could I take, take that up to twenty-one full-time personnel? Not saying we're at twenty-one right off the bat, but they give us some room, but we're not doing this every couple of years or so. Uh, another, uh, part of this was two forty point oh three. Uh, it had a lot of limitations on how we can transport, basically, it says that while we're under contract with Sharon Jackson, we can transport there, mutual aid, and also, of course, within the city of Shelby.
You mean twenty, you mean the two forty oh four, right?
Twenty-two forty oh four, my bad, sorry.
No problem.
And then, two forty point zero six was with medical charges, we currently soft bill. So, we take over transports, our patients, we'll see if they'll go to their insurance company, and no other bill will come to their house. Whatever insurance pays, that's it. We're supplemented by taxpayers' money, so that's where the difference is made up. So, once, once it goes through insurance or Medicare, Medicaid, that's the only thing that will happen. Uh, we traditionally charge for most reasonable and customary. And again, rather than coming back time after time after time, we'll just say, hey, whatever's reasonable customary with industry standard, that's where we'll set the bar. Uh, it's been a lot of work. The guys have stepped up, uh, captains come up and support, if you'd like to ask them questions, that's fine. Uh, they're willing to, in the meantime, until we can hire some people to do a lot, do a lot of overtime, I really appreciate that. So, uh, if there's any questions, fire away.
Mr. Robb.
I, you're working on a plan to, uh, to bring this staffing number up?
Yes, uh, we would like to hire three immediately, uh, to bring the staffing up to five per shift. We want to try to keep five, right now, in the city of Shelby, there's two with the private ambulances and a minimum of three firefighters. If we get a simple car wreck, we need two M T's in each squad, one bringing an engine. So, that just covers, and traditionally, for decades, that's the staffing we've had in the city of Shelby, it's five people between the private and with us. So, that's where we'd like to be. So, we want to add five immediately, uh, there's going to be some.
Looks like you're saying add.
Add three, yeah, I took that from minimum to five, I'm sorry, yes.
No problem.
Yeah, and, uh, so we keep five on duty and eventually move up to six, just to cover overtime, time off, those kind of things. Uh, that's the same level of manpower that we traditionally had, so we're not, you know, having five on duty all the time, and so it works for us. Like I said, we've done this for decades, it just loving. So, but it's time to grow, uh, we're stepping into a new area, and we're the last in the county that does the transport. And I can only think of one other department in the entire area of being normal, that doesn't sort of transport. So, uh, it's been, we've been working this way, uh, it happened a little sooner than I planned, but, uh, we're definitely heading that way, and we're gonna continue, I will continue to keep pushing up the manpower, we're gonna have to get up to that point. Uh, when we start transporting, the revenue stream, it's not a tab, it's not gonna come out directly as soon as we turn the faucet on. It'll take about ninety days for us to start seeing return on that. And we'll see when that comes in, hopefully we'll add, you know, be able to add more, be in a position where we're able to add more people. So, and the next bridge with that is where are we gonna put them? And that's another discuss, a discussion for later on, we're gonna have, there's a lot of planning, uh, it's gonna take help from everybody to get this done. There's gonna be a lot of things, a lot of changes, so we've got some, uh, more council, some decisions to make, which way we want to go, where we're gonna put our new firefighters, where we're gonna house them. So, uh, the new ambulance, it's been a work, it'll be in in October of two thousand twenty-four, I found out, so we got a little bit to wait on that, but it is work. Tell me, does it like any further questions?
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the chief had said that the private ambulance service wanted, I think he said, an exorbitant amount of money to remain. What is that exorbitant amount of money?
Three hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. We had one other interested party, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, that'll pay for, two hundred fifty to pay for two and a half, firing with benefits, insurance, everything I go. So, it's, that would've been money basically out the window that the city would solve, no return on.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, in the section, uh, two forty point oh six, I'm looking at the existing language and where it has, uh, the fees of five hundred fifty dollars for basic life support, seven fifty for advanced life support, nine fifty for advanced life support, dash two, parenthesis, cardiac, close parenthesis, and fourteen dollars per mile for patient support. So, we have an existing ordinance, actual, actual dollar amounts. The, uh, the proposed language, the charges for, in, uh, emergency medical services provided by the fire department should be based on reasonable and customary industry standards. I have, I have two questions. Who will set those rates and how will they be set?
We are compared to other departments our size, uh, believe it or not, actually, I just checked, this was done in, uh, five, five sixteen, sixteen, the rates haven't changed, they're exactly the same. So, if, you know, if you don't take any action, it's exactly the same. So, we're, our billing, our billing company, Medical, will advise us, hey, you can go up, they know what the insurance company will, will make or will pay. Uh, they said you can ask for more, but you're not gonna get it, this is what you're gonna get. So, they pretty much advise us on, here's what you need to be charging, it's not a money grab by any means, but they know what they can recover for us. And they work off a percentage, so they're natural, they're gonna try to do best at hand force, but it's not, it's definitely not a money grab. But it's compared to other departments and demographics of our size.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, as I mentioned, you know, we, we've got set dollar amounts here, so the, so the city council has established what these charges will be, just as the city council has established what water rates, sewer rates, and electric rates are. My concern is that, that this language here constitutes an improper delegation of, of legislative authority.
Well.
And, and having said that, I move that section two forty point oh six be deleted from the legislation.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Hearing those seconds, we'll move forward with the legislation as it is coming to be presented. Mr. McLaughlin.
Chief Thompson, what's the second?
Yeah, um, I'll take the point for that, uh, with the, with, I was looking ahead, kind of, instead of coming back every time, we just went with those reasonable customer, that's on, they type up exactly what I asked them to, so. I didn't know, I guess I was trying to avoid doing this down the road, but I'm finding, the, the prices have changed, so really, I'm finding a way, I'm just trying to save some labor down there.
Mr. Mark.
Oh. So, you mentioned those rates haven't changed since two thousand sixteen. Um, the, uh, how often do they, do you have any sense of how often you would have to come back to change that, or city council?
No, I, I don't, we're, we meet annually, plus we also get quarterly reports, uh, and every time we submit billing, we get reports. So, usually, uh, once a year, they'll come up, sit down, they'll just talk about how everything looks, and, uh.
Mayor, point of order, now I'm gonna speak against my own motion. I made a motion to delete, did not get a second, and now we're discussing, in essence, the amendment I made to delete.
Very similar, uh, point well taken, but I think Mr. Martin's, uh, maybe going down another path.
I, I should like to go down that path, too.
Mr. Mark.
The point of order is well received, but the, I think the, the, the point of clarification here is that not receiving a second isn't necessarily a means to not bring up something further. So, um, that said, um, obviously, the intent is to, uh, make it to where we don't have to go back to council repeatedly. But it does seem, um, it does seem that that's not, I mean, what you're saying is that's not really a concern.
Well, the, the thing I was saying is that the prices have changed. Now, if they come in tomorrow and prices change, absolutely, but they said right now, we're right where we need to be. So, I mean, this isn't, you know, if, if council chooses to, hey, we'll, we come back every time there's a price change, that's fine, I'm just trying to avoid some, get some labor with it, just say whatever's customary with our democrats and our size, we'll go with that. And I take the point for that, so.
Do you have a queue for cake in Washington?
Yes, please. With my experience with a different department handling the same business, recently, within four to five years, we've signed a contract that says do not bring it back to us, it always rolls over, have reasonable and customary. Prior to that, we've been approached three times in one year, and sometimes it's been one or two approaches in three years. So, going on almost twelve years as chief, there's been variables, and sometimes it's three times a year, sometimes it's twice a year, sometimes it's one, sometimes it's none. Recently, we just signed it over as a five-year, relative to five years of just continue to update it at reasonable and customary. On that same page, you can also make a point of order to specify your own rates. If council would generate a number to specify, you can override reasonable and customary and appoint your own prices. So, you have that option, too. But to clarify on this last point, sometimes it's been three times a year, sometimes it's been three years with nothing. So, a lot of this is based off of federal law that kicks it in based on other human services, and then it kind of trickles down through Medicaid and healthcare, and it goes down to ambulance. It, it's triple down effect, but it starts at the federal level and it works its way down. So, to give a solid answer of how many times a year, or how often in ten years, that's a variable, because it's based on legislation through the federal level and works its way down. I'm sure if that helps you or not, but.
Any further discussion? Mr. Mark.
Uh, we'll council take a ten-minute recess.
Second. Motion by Mr. Mark and a second by Mr. Gates, we take a ten-minute recess, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Mark.
Yay.
That motion passes, seven forty-five.
It does constitute improper delegation of legislative.
I'm sure I have some treatises on that.
There are all kinds of cases on.
How would we do that, though? Like, are, like, the base of the image is provision, so it means they accept by. It does give you a reference, though.
But of course, that's much.
We were on a contract, not a draw. Medicare rates, Medicaid rates would be set forth by statute, that's, that's a fact. And mutual will pay different than. We can't, that's our. The thing is pretty common.
Oh, we, we did, we're only on three minutes, ten minutes is a long time. I would like a break. That's your reasonable and customary standards, remember. Ten minutes until everybody's back in the room whichever first occurs.
Well, since we're all back in place and the, please council, if everyone is ready, if not ready, we can wait for a full ten minutes, it's what we're all set. I think you can come back in session, is that, that please council? All right, council comes back in session, Mr. Powell, are you ready there at?
Yes.
Seven forty-nine, back in session seven forty-nine. We're continuing the discussion, ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Orders number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty-four, two thousand twenty-two, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county audit.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Is that correct?
We have a simultaneous motion by Mr. Gates as first and Mr. Roberts with the second for the passage of Resolution number fifty-four, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, this is, uh, one of those pieces of legislation I call housekeeping. It's a follow-up to the budget that we passed, uh, a few months ago. The finance director, the clerk has attached that information. So, the Budget Commission has worked its magic on our budget and the budgets of all the other subdivisions, and they've returned this. Um, of course, it's all important, but if you look at Schedule B, this is, I think, the most important thing. It, it lists the tax levies we have and when they were last passed by the voters. And so, this is what we need to keep in mind, so that when we have levies come up for renewal, we, uh, we know when those are and we can plan accordingly. Uh, Mayor, I would ask unanimous consent that at the bottom of that page, uh, prior, just prior to the line with your, your signature line, the word approved be inserted there, and at the end of that line, the phrase president of council be deleted.
Oh, all right, here we are. So, um, before my name, the word approved, is that, uh, you hear that correctly?
Yes.
And removing the term president of council.
That's correct, sir.
Are there objections to that, uh, to those changes? No, they will be made as presented, approved, and removing president of council. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-four, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty-five, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service of the city of Shelby to apply for an urban canopy restoration grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of Resolution number fifty-five, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I understand there's a member of the Shade Tree Commission who's present here who can, uh, share his thoughts.
Mr. Cullen.
Gentlemen, thank you for having me. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Eric Cullen, with the Shade Tree Committee, also in the Land Committee. So, I've come to you tonight to ask for passage of this resolution. Uh, what we're applying for is a five thousand dollar grant. It's a fifty-fifty match, so if we receive the grant, we would receive five thousand dollars from the state, and then we'd put up five thousand dollars of our own shade tree money. Um, the good news is, we have enough money in our fund, and we don't have to run the council and ask for any money out of our fund or anything like that. Uh, and it's what we plan on doing, is we plan on trying, if we can get this, to plant forty trees throughout the city, in all the wards, in the park system, um, for our fortieth year anniversary of being, uh, Shade Tree City. And, um, I, do, do you guys have any of the maps or anything? So, we, we have some maps of where the trees are going to be planted, and what trees initially we plan on planting. You know, this is just kind of preliminary, just to try and get the grant. Um, things are, will get fluid if we get through, you know, we'll try and do some price shopping and stuff like that, different merceries, and obviously, the tree placement and the stuff could possibly change. Uh, we, when we were told about the grant, we only had like a month and a half to get something put together, so we were working on ordinance update, actually, and kind of had to put that on the back burner so we could move forward with this grant. And, um, we figured the quickest way to try and figure some, a plan out, was to go to Jerry Marshall in Parks and be like, you guys need some trees, you need some help. And, uh, Jerry Marshall, he was right on it, he was, he was like, yeah, we, we've had a lot of trees lost due to, uh, disease and storms and everything else throughout the parks, so he was more than willing to go out and walk around and try and find a good placement for some of the trees to give a place. We have quite a variety, a little bit of everything in there, um, a lot of different colors, different ideas, um, and, yeah, that's about it. Um, other than that, I'd also like to, uh, thank Joe and Jessica Gritman, who has worked really hard on getting this grant, uh, applying, probably nothing about a grant, so I couldn't do it louder. But, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I just, uh, my, uh, my mother was one of the charter members of the Shade Tree Commission. She served on it for, for twenty-five years, and, and for many of those years chaired the commission, so the Shade Tree Commission is, is near and dear to my heart. Uh, I've looked at the application, there's a, there are a couple, more than a couple, there's a number of corrections that need to be made. Looking at page five, the first paragraph, the first line, the Shade Tree Commission, a public-private commission, that's, that's an error, it's not a private commission. So I ask unanimous consent that the, that the slash and the word private be deleted. I'm looking in the third line, where it says in error, typo, unfortunately, a somewhat more common than we'd like, that the word, that the fourth, third, yeah, the fourth word be replaced with the word public. Ask unanimous consent for that. Um, second paragraph, uh, Shade Tree Commission should be under, should be capitalized, and then down the other line, uh, would allow it to really, um, same paragraph, the third, uh, second line from the bottom, where it says they will continue those efforts, uh, to change it to it will continue those efforts. It, of course, being the commission, it being singular, as, as commission singular. So Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for those, one, two, three, four, five, five changes.
All right, uh, by unanimous consent, the, um, that's the changes in the first line to, instead of public slash private, it just be public, removing the slash and the private. Third line down, fourth word in, to, the word should be public. And then the second paragraph, uh, the Shade Tree Commission, capital S, capital T, capital C, and then the last part of that sentence, first line, it to, to really make, and then, next to the last line, it will continue those efforts added, this planted for the tree population. Uh, so those are the changes that are asked for by unanimous consent. Are there any objections? I'm hearing none, those changes will be made, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I think this is a great effort, and I commend everyone involved.
Yes, I believe it, yes. It's, uh, yeah, the forty-forty, another concept. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-five, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty-six, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service of the city of Shelby to enter into an agreement of omni-fiber for installation and providing internet services and declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Is that correct?
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Resolution fifty-six, two thousand twenty-two, there's a discussion. Mr. Gates.
Looking at, um, the pages aren't numbered, but it would be the second page of the lease, um, paragraph five. It lists, uh, broadband services in a number of parks. I note that McBride Park is not listed in that.
You're talking about the, the, the backside of the, okay, uh, it would be right page, you're correct.
So McBride Park will be added?
Mr. Ensmen, are you putting a scope?
Ken, maybe Chief Combs could answer that question a little better, but the seven parks that were listed here were, well, two of them are reservoirs, so those are not parks there. Of the five parks are listed, those were discussed for the cameras. Uh, the council had authorized purchase of the, uh, some of the funds that was, that was provided for the city. Uh, I'm not sure McBride Park was included in those cameras. I think we could not add anything, as, as, as possible that we could add that, that is different. Well, I might defer some of the McBride Park discussion to Chief.
They, they were not included in the estimate, the quote, or the presentation to council.
That is the reason why it was, uh, included in, in the, like, I'm sure. But, yeah, I mean, we could, we could go back in there and say that's something...
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll say, I ask unanimous consent that McBride Park be added in section five.
It's been submitted that McBride Park would be added to the list of the parks in paragraph five. Are there any objections to adding McBride Park by unanimous consent? Mr. Robb?
I don't necessarily have an objection to that, I, I just question the reason to add that park, that, um, is a Little League field that is currently leased to, uh, to Little League.
Mr. Martin.
Uh, again, not necessarily objection, but a clarified question. Mr. Ensmen, if a park's listed here, this, this means that they are providing broadband service, the connection, the actual Wi-Fi piece of it is, that is the obligation of the city. Is that correct understanding?
That is correct.
Yes. So, just because we list it here doesn't necessarily mean that we are bound to actually provide the Wi-Fi service.
Correct.
It just means that, in the event we decided to provide Wi-Fi service, they would be obligated to provide the connection to that Wi-Fi.
That is correct, yes.
Mr. Gates.
For clarification, is the decision to provide Wi-Fi in these locations separate from the responsibility of the lessor to provide broadband services to those locations?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The, the language here would require the lessee to provide at all times broadband services to, to, to the following locations, and it has this list of parks.
Correct.
So there's a difference between providing, the less, the lessee providing broadband services and the provision of Wi-Fi.
While omni-fiber is providing the installation with the broadband for the community, they will provide the, the connectivity to these locations. So, the city would be held responsible for the installation of the video, uh, apparatuses that would be installed. They are simply going to provide the services to provide the communication back to the police department for, for the video services that would be given to these selected seven locations. Does that help to answer the question?
Mr. Martin.
If I could provide a little, little clarity, or maybe not, but it's, it is my understanding that the only, only one of these parks that we are looking at doing Wi-Fi as a whole at this time is Black Fork Common.
If we're looking at just Wi-Fi, that's correct.
Yeah, and, and the rest, the reason that we need terminuses at the other, uh, parks is specifically just camera hookup to the network.
That's correct, for security purposes.
So, the, yeah, the only one we're looking at Wi-Fi wise is that one. So, the question would then be, you know, we would have the, if we, if we went forward with this amendment, we would have the ability to put a camera up at McBride Park if we chose later on.
Correct.
There's no plans for that. We could also potentially do Wi-Fi later. So I don't, I don't necessarily see a problem with adding McBride Park, but I did, I just want, I felt council members to understand what that change is. It's not saying we're gonna have Wi-Fi there, it's not saying we're gonna put cameras there, because that's not in the plans or what's been approved. Uh, it just means there will be some form of connectivity provided there in the event that we decided to do something in the future.
That'd be correct, yes.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, is it to the city's advantage to have connectivity at McBride Park?
Mr. Martin.
In, in, in my view, based on the plans we have with no cameras there, I do not feel at this point it's advantageous. I also feel that if we did, I, I think we could go back and revisit this, if I were to have, I think they'd have a problem with that, um, but at, at this point, I, I can't see we're just having a terminus for broadband at a random, essentially a random location. I know it's not random, but it would be, it would be just like having a broadband terminus. There's fiber running by McBride Park at some point, and so for us to, in the future, develop a terminus for that, uh, would not be, I think, an issue. But I don't think it rules us to do it at this point.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, is there a re-opener clause in this, uh, proposed lease? Uh, Mr. Martin has said that he thinks that there would be, you know, that, that omni-fiber would not object, that's, that's, that's a leap of faith, quite honestly.
Mayor, I don't, this guy's got a question for Mr. Ensmen. So, as Mr. Martin, he gave us a line running down, down, up and down Broadway.
Correct.
Just like if someone, you know, ADA Broadway wants service to their location, they will tap in at the, at that time, they'll tap into that line and take that service to that household. Would be the same thing at McBride, that's running past McBride, and it wanted, we, McBride Park wanted that, or we decided on that, would be the same thing, they splice it, line over. Is that similar or not?
It's similar, yes.
Because it's not exactly the same?
At, at some point about the installation of, of the broadband being installed down Broadway, there's going to be a point of, of where the connectivity's going to take place. So, yes, they, they could, in, in the future, allow that to happen, yes. We, we could request that in the future.
What, what, excuse me, again, if I may allow that, you know, just... So, you know, res one, res two, uh, I'm sorry, res two, res three, self-part and so forth, these, um, uh, were, were they referred to as providing broadband services? Or each one of those would have capacity to go back to the, to the Justice Center?
That's correct.
That makes it different than someone's household?
It would.
So maybe to answer Mr. Gates' question, what advantages that to the city, I think it is an advantage to the citizens of the city for Chief Combs, if something, an event happens at McBride Park, if we have camera video that, that has this resolution to it, that... to it, that it could be helpful solving a crime, maybe catching someone in the act if cameras were indeed placed there. So, I think that would be the advantage of having the broadband service to McBride.
I agree. You know, the, you know, the what-ifs, it's always a dangerous, you know, path to go down, but, you know, we're going to provide, obviously, for cameras at, at all these parks, with the exception of McBride. It would be awkward at best if something happens and, and, and we're presented the fact that you provided protection for the citizenry at all these parks, but not McBride? I don't think we want to be in that position.
Mr. Fox.
Is there a cost to the city for these terminuses at the parks?
That was all done by, I believe, the, the funds that was provided to the city, like to support and purchase of that.
So, Martin, yes. Do you want to speak, Chief?
The, the, the issue of, of McBride or any other of the, the baseball field was simply an oversight on my part at the outset of this project. So, we did a number of presentations, we identified the parks, and I simply overlooked McBride at the time. It wasn't brought to my attention until the end of the preparation for the project to submit for ARPA funds, when a park board member said, what about McBride? And I said, but I forgot about McBride. I didn't think of it at the time. So, all of the funds that were committed for the cameras and the infrastructure were for the other parks, and I think that the idea is, and, and it was discussed at the park board meeting, that should the park board want to come back, revisit at some point and add those cameras, they would be responsible for that. And I think as, as this fiber provider, I think the idea will probably be that the parks will say, we would like a camera there and to provide the infrastructure now while they're doing it, so that they can move forward that plan. But because the city committed the ARPA dollars for the whole project and I neglected to include McBride, that's why it was, it was an oversight on my part.
Mayor, I have unanimous consent request to add McBride Park to, to section five.
Mr.?
Okay.
Do you have an objection to adding McBride Park?
Mayor, I move that McBride Park be added to section five.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, that McBride Park be added to paragraph five. Discussion. We're taking this vote to amend to add McBride Park to section of paragraph five. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
That motion passes. Further discussion on the main motion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, in the paragraph up above, there's a, a space after the word "complete." Is that just a formatting problem or is that a blank?
Formatted.
Thank you.
Sorry, jumped in.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
The, back to paragraph five, the, the annual rent for a hundred dollars, I suppose that, that's, that's minimal, yes, but in consideration of all the things that they provide, that I think we get the better end of the deal. Looking at paragraph eighteen, there's a, I, I don't know what that punctuation mark saw, there's a squiggle after the word ends.
We shall remove the squiggle.
And again, there's reference to this hut. Can Mr. Ensmen give us a better description of what this hut is? I, you know, I used to build huts when I was a kid out in the woods, but...
I would agree, because I asked the same thing.
Okay.
So, it had, it's just a communication building. So, if you see a cell tower, you can just see the communication structure facility below the cell tower, that is a communication hut. So, it's just this, a, a small twelve by twenty structure.
Mayor, it'd be about the size of a shed.
A little larger, correct.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Voting on the main motion of Resolution number fifty-six?
Excuse me, Mayor, in the, the third whereas paragraph, mayor as director of public service, the "S" should be stripped and from services. I ask unanimous consent for that.
An objection to removing the "S" from services shall be done. Now, voting on the main motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Resolution number fifty-six, two thousand twenty-two passes. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the, the safety committee is meeting this Wednesday.
A little miscellaneous, correct?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, miscellaneous, I'm sorry.
Safety committee is meeting this Wednesday at three thirty. I know that Chief Combs has a, an important and significant presentation to make. If other council members can be in attendance there, I think they will find that very much worth their while.
Sir. Mr. Robb.
And as chairman, I will not be there. I will have a surgery on Wednesday, so I will not be at the safety committee's meeting.
Did I miss something? Do you want to make a report for your amp?
I don't have that ready. I'll probably just do it in writing.
All right, very good.
But thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I need counsel adjourned.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Motion passes, council adjourns at eight seventeen. Ladies and gentlemen? Gentlemen, I'm out of town on next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.